Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the James City County Planning Commission. It is July 2, 2024, and it is 6:00 PM. Ms. Ice Stanis, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Allman.
President.
Dr. Allman represents the Roberts District. Mr. May?
Here.
Mr. May represents the Powhatan District. Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Everson represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Rogers represents the Berkeley District. Mr. Haldeman?
Here.
Mr. Haldeman is an at-large member. Mr. Polster?
Here.
Mr. Polster represents the Jamestown District. And Mr. O'Connor?
President.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member and is Chair of the Commission. I'm Susan Ice Stanis, Director of Planning for the County, and it's my pleasure to serve as Secretary to the Commission. Sitting to my left is Ms. Liz Parman, Deputy County Attorney. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we begin tonight, I would simply like to thank everybody for being here. I know we moved this to July 2 as opposed to July 3, but coming up on Independence Day, you know, this is where democracy starts. If so, I appreciate everybody being here and providing feedback tonight. Just a couple of notes for our agenda this evening. When we get to the consent agenda, I believe there's going to be a request to remove Site Plan-22-006 off of the consent agenda and have a discussion. And when we get to public hearing number three, which is SUP-24-0010-724 Arlington Island Road Tourist Home, the applicant has asked for a referral. So if you're here to speak on that application tonight, we will open the public hearing and you can make your comments then. If you choose, they've asked for a deferral to August. The application may change between now and August, so your comments can be heard tonight. It'll be part of the record, or you can come back in August and share your comments then. So completely up to you. So the first item on our agenda tonight is the public comment. This is a time that's set aside for citizens to make comments for anything pertinent to the Planning Commission but is not a public hearing this evening. So is there anybody that wishes to address the Planning Commission? Seeing and hearing none, we will...
I've got one over here.
Yes, sir. Please, please come up and state your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks. Frank Lobash. I live at 3356 North Riverside Drive, and I'd like to speak in support of the SUP-24-11, which is on the agenda tonight.
Sir, you can do that at the public hearing when we have that. It'll be on the agenda this evening. This time is for anything that's not a public hearing.
Okay.
So we'll have that time on the third case this evening. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go on to the reports of the Commission. Mr. Rogers?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee did not meet for its regular meeting on Wednesday, June 19, 2024, due to the Juneteenth holiday. But the Development Review Committee did then meet for a special meeting on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, at 4:00 PM. We had one new business item, which was a request from Mr. Vaughn Poller of the James City County Neighborhood Development Division for an exception to Section 19 TAC 47 of the subdivision ordinance to allow for lots fronting along an existing street and a major subdivision, rather than requiring those lots to front onto a new road. This item was part of the James City County Neighborhood Development's Clark Lane Workforce Housing Development. The members of the DRC had a brief discussion regarding the existing conditions of the area and the potential impacts of Section 1947 on that development. These particular lots backed tight to an existing railroad line without reasonable space to put a private road in there. Additionally, nearby homes on the same street front this existing street in the same manner proposed. There was a motion to approve this exception request. The motion passed unanimously on a vote of 3 to 0. And additionally, it can be noted that the meeting was attended by a number of nearby residents who were very interested in staying informed regarding the progress of the project. Subject to your questions, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Rogers? Thank you, Mr. Rogers. There was no Policy Committee meeting in June, so we will move on to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda tonight, we have three items. One is Conceptual Plan 24-0042-179 and 191 Clark Lane Lot Frontage Exception Request. Site Plan 22-0006 Settlement at Powhatan Creek Phase 4 Preliminary Plaid Approval. And our third item is minutes of the June 5, 2024, regular meeting. So any comments, edits, or adjustments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like us to pull SPLN 22-006 for discussion.
Anybody opposed to that? So we will amend our consent agenda to the conceptual plan and minutes of our June 5, 2024, regular meeting. So...
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On Site Plan 22-0006, which is a settlement at Powhatan Creek Phase 4, I recuse myself from a prior discussion on that, and I will continue to do so this evening. So I will pass the gavel to Mr. Haldeman, and...
Thank you. This isn't a public hearing, so Mr. Polster, why don't you lead us off? You're the one who pulled it.
Is there anybody from the applicant that's here? Can you pull up the cover sheet and development plan, please? And specifically, I want to look at C-512, C-30, and L-3.0. And if you will, please, the question's there for you, I think. You are with AES, please?
Yes, Ryan Stevenson with AES Consulting Engineers.
The questions that I have are primarily to try to ascertain and find out what the responsibilities are after this project is handed over to the HOA. And so I've got some questions involving taking a look at these plans. Now, when I look at 30 on there, it looks like there is a reta... That's 40, not 30. I'm sorry? Okay, maybe he can define it off there. It looks like there's a retaining wall on the left-hand side and all the way up through the front and over to the right. Is that correct?
There are retaining walls on the site, yes.
Okay. And can you bring up 30? Cover sheet, that's it. Okay, that's 30. The retaining wall that's there, in the bottom-left-hand corner, there's a description of something there. Is that the retaining wall?
There shouldn't be any retaining wall in the bottom-left corner now.
Well, it says there. It's a baffle wall detail.
Baffle wall is related to a BMP. That's a measure in the BMP itself to help lengthen the flow path for water.
Okay, so can we go to L-3.0, please? Right there. Is this the description of what the retaining wall is going to be?
I don't see... I don't see our retaining wall detail on that sheet.
There's a wooden retaining thing, and it's three foot high, and specifications are wood...
There's a wood fence detail I see on there.
Pardon?
There's a wood fence detail that I see on there.
I'm trying to understand what is going to be the retaining wall. Is it going to be wooden? Is it going to be concrete? What is it going to be?
The retaining walls will be concrete or block wall. That'll be decided by the builder.
And that clears that up, because I was confused with the baffle, because the baffling pieces, it has to be replaced every two years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I wouldn't want to think that the homeowners are going to be stuck with that.
Absolutely not.
At all. Can we go to 70, please? C-7.0. I don't know if you saw the traffic going back and forth between me and the staff on the stream piece that was there. And, you know, when I go back to the Powhatan Watershed Plan of 2000, which is almost 24 years ago, that string was in pretty good condition except for the historic Powhatan. And there was, at that point, a stream restoration recommendation. And in fact, that was done. But 24 years later, after we just finished the latest Watershed Management Plan, there were three reaches that were suboptimal. Two of one were identified that are bordering that. As a matter of fact, the one stream reach, I don't know if you're familiar with those at all. Are you?
Yes.
Okay, so the ST-121F, which is almost along the area where the outfall comes out. When you all did your engineering piece of this thing, did you, in fact, make an assessment of what the stream bed was like and what remediations may be required?
We did not. We made sure that anything we released from our site was attenuated to below requirements for stormwater, and we met every requirement of the master plan that was in place for the development, treating all impervious area, all those requirements. But we did not assess the stream bed downstream.
But the attenuation that you put in is based on what?
Based on 100-year storm eleva... 1, 2, 10, 100-year storm elevations.
Of course, you understand that, given the climate change and the precipitation, the VDOT guys up there is by 25%. And in fact, within the Watershed Master Plan, the planning that we did there, we also put a 25% increase in there for precipitation. And so it seemed to me that it would have been prudent, given the location of that stream bed and the downstream piece, that there should have been some kind of remediation, at least looked at, for those incised culverts, as well as manhole covers for the HRSD line were discovered there. Do you have an opinion about whether or not that should have been done?
I mean, that is possible. We took this plan through the SRP Division through multiple iterations, and we also went to the Chesapeake Bay Board because we had a minor RPA impact for the sanitary sewer connection. And those items were, you know, were never asked of us or discussed.
That's why we're bringing it up. And you're aware of this problem with the Watershed Master Plan. So I guess what I'm asking for, and for the Commission to consider, is that underneath the review that the Planning Commission is being asked to do, it can either approve with a condition, of which that condition could not be made, or you may decide not to meet it, or it could be disapproved with a reason for what that should be. And in this particular case, I understand that there was never any real look at it. Was there a water quality impact assessment done in the RPA area that evaluated that stream bed?
There was a WQIA done related to the RPA impact that we had on our site, but nothing further downstream from that.
Well, we're talking about the stream culvert area being right directly, at least from the maps that I've seen, directly where your culvert comes out. I mean, there's two streets, two areas of the... Two impacted areas within the property line. One rests down below at the end of the property, not the end of the property, but the end of the housing on the left-hand side. And the ST-1F sits right there where your outfall comes in. And so what I'm asking is whether or not you would be willing to make an assessment of that. Now, why would I ask for that? Okay? Eventually, when this is handed back over to the HOA, and even though there's an easement there on the part of either conservation easement or whatever, it becomes their responsibility, along with the county, in the same way that the historic Powhatan folks took on the responsibility to make the stream restoration for them. And so I wouldn't want to see that homeowners' association being stuck with what could be, I think, an estimated quarter to half a million dollars to do that. And that would be cheap, from what I've seen, for stream restoration projects. So is it unreasonable for you to take a look at this to see if there is a way you can mitigate that piece? Or, in fact, do that?
We can certainly... We would not be opposed to looking at what it would take to mitigate that. I mean, we do feel, and in my professional opinion, feel like we have mitigated through coordination with the county and the boards to absolutely minimize what's released from our site and do less than what was allowed per the master plan. We have less units and impervious than what was allowed. But we would certainly be willing to look at doing more.
It's not the mitigation of your outflow, even though I think it's undersized. But that entire stream bed, over the last 24 years, has eroded, and it will continue to erode, even if we get another hurricane in there. And so the incising that's taking place in that area is going to continue to go to a sub... From a suboptimal to poor. And it'll also impact the one down below. And so it seems to me now is the time before it becomes more expensive to try to mitigate that stream cut now.
And that is something we can, I guess, we'd work with the county, I guess, the stormwater division, to come up with something that would be acceptable.
Yes, so we could work with the applicant. It would likely mean that stormwater might have to review the plan again, as they'd already issued approval on the existing plan that's shown tonight. Were there any questions?
I guess we want to make sure we're clear on this, is that the county has put millions of dollars into stream restoration projects. I mean, millions of dollars. And so, you know, in the reply that I got back from the county, is at some time, they would probably partner with an HOA to be able to try to defray that cost at some point. But that's a cost that I don't think ought to be visited upon the HOA before the thing is developed. And so I'm trying to find a way to solve that problem in that stream bed that has been identified by that master plan, and to see if, in fact, after we take... That's why I asked for the water quality assessment, so that we have a clear assessment of what can be done or not, and the cost to it and the timeline for it. And that's what I'm asking for.
So I would have to discuss with the Stormwater and Resource Protection staff regarding what a timeline would look like for getting that together. I know we would be happy to discuss that and get back to you. However... I would have to probably get back to you regarding that. I would need to discuss with the stormwater staff, as they would be the ones that would be reviewing and working with any... Working with the applicant regarding the review of that.
I'm hesitant to make a motion to either approve with a condition or disapprove with a notion of a water source assessment on it, because this project has been going on for a number of years. And there's a lot of money that you put into this thing, and I understand that, okay? What I'm trying to do is find out how we can protect the homeowners' association from another financial impact that they've experienced already in the development of this project. And so I'm looking for some kind of insurance from the applicant that they'll not only look at it, but consider the notion that there may need to be a stream restoration, at least at that point, or another mitigation piece that may make that. Is that agreeable?
That seems agreeable to me. I mean, my client is not here today, but I know that he would want this plan to get through approval. And, you know, we've already gotten stormwater approval and all the other approvals we needed minus this, so I know he would want to do what is right.
And, you know, when I talk to the stormwater people about this, their comment back to me was that the Watershed Master Plan that was approved by the board in 2023, that this project was grandfathered from that. And so from their perspective, if this project would have gone before, without... Before, when the plan was approved, then maybe it would be. So what I'm trying to do is how to do the right thing by the homeowners.
I understand. And in my mind, I'm trying to do the right thing by my client.
And I understand that. So I'm willing to put a condition in approving this, as opposed to making a recommendation to disapprove it and then have you come back in 90 days. I think that's too bureaucratic. But I wanted some assurance that you honestly are going to look at a way to mitigate this on behalf of not only your customer, which is a good neighbor thing, because if he builds in James City County, he ought to do the right thing by the county also. But he ought to do the right thing by the homeowners' association. So I'm happy, if you're agreeable to that, to make a motion to approve with that condition, if that's agreeable with staff.
I'd like to hear the condition a little bit more clearly, so we understand. It sounds like, in general, you're looking to study what Mr. Polster is concerned with. And Mr. Polster, is there... I mean, is that about...
It's not only to study it, but to see what can be done to mitigate it, because we already know there is a problem with the stream bed. That's not even an issue, okay? So how is it that we're going to mitigate that and not burden the homeowners' association with the downstream cost of fixing that problem? In the same way that the Powhatan shores, or Powhatan, historic Powhatan, fix their problem up above you that flows down.
Is your question how to mitigate the problem that already exists, or to fix it, or to put greater protections on to make sure that no further damage is done?
I leave that to them to come back from an engineering point of view. I don't want to tell them how to suck an egg, okay? I mean, that's their business. But I think he understands the spirit of what I'm trying to get to, because ultimately, you're going to have to answer to them. So is that suitable for you?
No, I'm sorry. The conditions need to be stated with more specificity, and they must relate to the subdivision ordinance. So you need to point to the section of the subdivision ordinance.
That's why I pointed to the water quality assessment impact, whether that was done, and whether it included the stream bed that is suboptimal. And that's why I pointed to that. And what he told me is they didn't do it.
Oh, so we did the WQIA.
But you didn't consider the culvert, or the stream.
I'm guessing because it was considered grandfathered, so...
Well, you didn't know it was grandfathered.
Well, we had, I mean, this master plan has been approved since 2020.
Okay, it still exists as a problem, and that's why I'm bringing it up. Whether it's grandfathered or not, it's still there, and it's going to be there until somebody fixes it. That's my condition, and that's what I'm pointing to. And that's 23-3.
Chapter 23 of the county code, the Chesapeake Bay ordinance?
23-3, a subsection of it underneath Section 2311, Water Quality Impact Assessment, and then the NSP requirements for it are 23-3.
So you need to... That's the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance?
Right.
You need to look to Chapter 19, the subdivision ordinance.
And 19 refers to that.
Okay.
So when the stormwater people approve your plan, did they sit on the fact that you were grandfathered for anything that may have already happened?
And the fact that everything we're doing on our site was done per the county and state regulations to make what we're releasing less than what's there now. and state regulations to, to make what we're releasing less than what's there now, so that we wouldn't make a situation worse downstream. That's what, that's what we worked through with, with the Stormwater Division.
So with, I'm, sorry, just a question here. So with those lots, there was roughly eight or nine lots that are technically in the RPA. Have those lots already been, I'm on the Chesapeake Bay Board, I'm just curious, have, I don't recall that going to the Board to?
They, they were not, they're not actually in the RPA. They're in the enhanced RPA buffer, which was something that was done for this project back in 99, 2000. And through every phase of the development, we've been allowed to impact the enhanced RPA buffer as long as we added enhanced RPA buffer elsewhere. So we have a net positive enhanced RPA buffer for the entire development. So every, every phase of this development, you'll see areas like that where there's impacts to the enhanced, but not the RPA buffer itself.
All right, cool. Thanks, thanks for that clarification.
If we agree with Mr. Polster, and he comes back, and there needs to be remediation done downstream, is that what you're expecting this to happen at this point? Is that right, Mr. Polster?
If you take a look at these two stream pieces that were suboptimal, ST 1-21F is directly along the area where the outfall comes out of the BMP. And that's the one that I'm most concerned with, because I, I've seen enough of Stormwater facilities to know that we get rainfall that exceeds that, and we've been getting that rainfall. So it's going to be coming out of there at a rate that's higher than what it's designed for. And when it does, it's going to go right into that stream bed that's already incised and impacted, period. It will. In the same way, over the last 24 years, that stream bed has been impacted because of the development that we've had. We had no, no development outside of the Powhatan shores and the Powhatan, historic Powhatan within that whole area. And over the last 24 years, we build up across the road in all of the area that's here. And so all of that has cumulatively impacted those stream reaches, and it's going to continue to do, because that, that total impervious surface is draining through there. It's not only what he does, it's what the other folks do. And Powhatan shores doesn't have a BMP. So it's that cumulative effect that's going to occur, not only for this project, but it's just continuing to aggravate this current situation. So I'm looking to see how we mitigate it. And, you know, the answer is, is we do a stream restoration, which is why it's on the list for the master plan, okay, as a potential candidate. That's how we come to decide to spend money on projects for stream restoration, is exactly that way. So that's, that's where I am. So am I clear with the county attorney's office on this? Well, there isn't. It's just the definitions of four. And, and I'm just saying, I want a water quality assessment. He's agreed to do that, to assess the impact.
Wouldn't the stream restoration be done by the county, though? Should that be a burden of the client if he's done everything right on his property?
Well, look at the Powhatan, historic Powhatan. It was on their property, and they went ahead and they repaired it, okay? It's not the county's responsibility to fix a private piece, okay? I mean, most of the stream restorations that we've done are with HOA, were done when they didn't have HOAs or anybody to do that. And we've been doing that with older neighborhoods forever and ever, okay? I mean, it, it's, we've put a lot of money, a lot of money in the stream restoration for clean water for the county, and that's what it's about, clean water. So anyhow, I don't know, we're beating this to death, and I'm just trying to find a way to bring a motion forward to say, yes, we approve it, but with the condition that you look at mitigating the issue. And whatever you come up with, that's fine. I mean, I'm not going to argue that piece. I mean, that's why you're the engineer. But I don't believe you guys did that, and you said yourself if you didn't.
I just want to be clear. We did, we did not look downstream, but we did do, be above and beyond what we were required to do on-site to protect. I don't want to seem like I'm not trying to protect downstream, I am.
Well, I, I understand that, but there was a pre-existing condition that you weren't aware of, and nor, nor did you look at. Okay, that's the issue.
Is it, is a downstream problem on this track?
It's the entire, the, the, the stream pieces, you see where the, the sewer line is right there, that white line, okay? That's, that's where the river, that's where this creek is. And as a matter of fact, that one that I've been pointing to not only has an incised culvert and trees falling down, but it's uncovered manholes where the sewer line is, okay? And it, and so the, the, that downstream bed is the entire white line that you see that goes all the way down there. That's where the stream bed is. It also happens to be where we run all of our sewer lines, because it's the lowest
Any other questions or comments?
I think I'm still just struggling with the idea of, I guess, the parameters of the condition. If the, as I listen to it, when we're talking all downstream and a stream restoration, it almost sounds, that sort of sounds to me like, like proper talk, like, like we'll build our neighborhood and we'll help you with general conditions, as opposed to, like, I see drawings of all these houses, and the houses are going to create something, and it's going to flow out. So I guess I pictured it more that they were responsible to do no harm with what comes out, but I don't know how they're responsible for this 24-year buildup of what we've got.
Well, the, the, the ST 21F that I'm talking about, the studies that were done that I sent to you in the email and the pictures identified 743 feet, along with the manhole and the culverts, and the pictures are there. And that's what I'm asking them to evaluate and to make sure that it's not furtherly impacted. I mean, it's right there where the outfall is going to be, and we are going to see more water coming out of there, despite the fact it's attenuated. It's only attenuated to a current set of standards, which doesn't consider climate change or increase of precipitation, period. And so I'm just looking to future-proof this for the homeowners association.
I have a couple of questions also. There's not a construction entrance to this project, is there?
There is.
Oh, where will it?
It, it's off of Saunders Bridge, where, where that existing pullout is right now by the, by the gate.
Oh, okay. But you come in off of Monticello Avenue before you get to the construction entrance?
Correct.
Okay. Will the entrance to the rest of Powhatan Settlement, would there be any construction parking along there, or? Okay. Another question. Will the design of these homes be consistent with, pardon me, the design of the, the rest of the community? Is it?
From what I understand, the, the builder and his architect are trying to be in conformance with the rest of the development, yes.
Has the, the builder met with the members of the community on this? Have they gotten?
I know they've spoken. I do not know if they've met. I, I was not at any of those meetings.
Will this be part of the HOA? The Powhatan Settlement HOA? Great, thanks. Anybody else? Before we get a motion, I, I'm going to support this, because I don't think we have any choice, but this is another example of a dysfunctional comprehensive plan, in my opinion. This will add to traffic on Monticello Avenue. Our, our traffic study from the comprehensive plan shows that this section of Monticello Avenue is going to increase 21% by 2045, and will take it from a low rating to a severe rating. And then the section of Monticello from News Road to one, to Ironbound Road, the main shopping corridor, is going to increase 60, 60%. It's going to go from 4,300 average daily trips to 69, I'm sorry, 43,000 average daily trips to 69,000, which is a 60% increase. It'll go from severe to, I guess, more severe rating. This, as Mr. Polster has already discussed, is in sub watershed 210. Sub watershed 210 is already non-life supporting. The, the sub watershed is basically dead due to a rapid increase in impervious cover, to which this will add. I, I know you've done your best to mitigate that, but you're not going to get all of it. I don't think, I don't think you can. And so we, it's getting late in the game for James City County, but I hope in the next comprehensive plan revision, we can take some steps to make sure this kind of thing doesn't happen again. So that's it, I'll get off my high horse.
Understood. Just to note, we, you know, this, these lots on this Phase Four were in the approved master plan from 2000, so hopefully they were accounted for in that. And we actually have less lots than were allowed. So we actually have less than was anticipated. And I believe the traffic consultant got approval from VDOT of no signal need. I don't know about the, the roads themselves, but.
VDOT approves everything.
No comment on that.
No other questions? Mr. Polster, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approve the plan with the condition that you look to see how you can mitigate the stream piece and hopefully not pass that cost on to the HOA at some future date.
So if we vote no, because we don't agree, agree, but we support the generalized motion, we vote no at this point?
Yeah, I think you can do that, and then you can make another motion of your own. So call the roll, please, Ms. Stennis.
Mr. Haldeman. Mr. Haldeman.
Yeah, I know, I'm still thinking.
Sorry. My mic wasn't down, so it's true you heard me.
No.
Mr. Polster.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Dr. Alman.
Aye.
Mr. Everson.
Aye.
Mr. May.
Yes.
That is 4-2, so the motion carries.
Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Connor Upstani.
Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
[inaudible]. Our first public hearing this evening is SUP-24-0008, 135 Country Club Road, two-family unit. Ms. Costello, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. Mr. Benny Zhang of Kaufman and Cannoles has applied on behalf of Ms. Rita Rooney for a special use permit to allow for a two-family dwelling at 135 Country Club Drive. The property is Zoned R2 General Residential and is designated Low Density Residential on the comprehensive plan land use map and is located inside the primary service area. The property is served by public water and private sewer. The three-bedroom residence is approximately 2,557 square feet. The second dwelling is approximately 648 square feet, bringing the total square footage to 3,205 square feet. At the time the building permit was issued in September of 2022, the second unit was proposed to be an attached accessory apartment. It met all the criteria set forth in section 24-32A of the zoning ordinance for accessory apartments. The intent of the ordinance is to ensure that the dwelling appears to be a single-family residence. During an inspection, it was noted that the accessory apartment did not meet the criteria stated in the ordinance. The owner and the builder initiated discussions at that time with staff about changing the plans to allow the addition to remain as is. Staff determined that the appearance as is was not that of a single-family residence and would be considered a two-family dwelling. Section 24260 states the, the special provisions for two-family dwellings. It meets three out of the four criteria, the one being the connection to public sewer. It does not. The Board of Supervisors may grant a waiver from the public sewer connection if the lot was legally in existence before the date of the adoption of the section of the ordinance. The Virginia Department of Health has approved the application, and that the property is in the PSA, and JCSA has approved the application. All these criteria have been met. With the proposed condition, staff finds a proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed condition. Staff also recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the waiver to connect to public sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Costello? Mr. Haldeman?
The footprint of the building hasn't changed, is that correct?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair. So if, if the stairway was located inside the dwelling, then this wouldn't have been an issue at all, this wouldn't even, even been before the commission? Is that the case here?
Correct.
But, but it was exterior to the building, and that's why we're here today?
Correct.
Thank you.
No more questions? Thank you very much. At this point, we will open the public hearing, and the first speaker card I have is Mr. Zhang.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. My name is Benny Zhang. I'm with the James City County Office of Kaufman and Cannoles at 4801 Courthouse Street, Suite 300, over in Newtown. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Rita, Rita Rooney, who's seated in the back and is in attendance here in the audience. I think staff has done a good job summarizing the matter before you all for consideration. We encourage your consideration to recommend approval. Just want to give a quick background. Ms. Rooney sought this application, and she's asked me to share this with you all shortly after her husband passed away about three years ago. Her daughter, who is adult age, has decided to move back. The two ladies would like to live together, but have independent units. And they had hired a builder to begin initially the application as an accessory apartment. They had constructed it, as Ms. Costello had mentioned, and then that issue is really this external stairway. James City County Code requires the character to appear like a single-family dwelling to maintain the accessory apartment rules and regulations. And instead, the owner and the builder had opted to try to leave the walls off, or in other cases, just leave the external staircase as is that's on-site today. And that's really where we come today before the board for the special use permit. Just wanted to add that this has been a deliberative process. We went through the conceptual plan stage, and just wanted to give credit to Ms. Costello and also to Kristy Parrish for just brainstorming ways to, and working with us and the owner in making this work today. So with that, we humbly come before you all, and happy to take any questions, but encourage your support of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. Any questions? Mr. Polster?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker card for this is Ms. Ann Merkley.
Ann Merkley, I live at 136 Country Club Drive, across the street from this house. And all the neighbors, we've gotten together, and we like the house the way it looks now. To put a wall up, it's going to look like a tenement or something. It's, it's just not going to be going with the neighborhood. Rita takes fantastic care of this property. She puts us all to shame, sort of. She's a, it's just pristine, and it's a beautiful home. My real big concern is if a wall goes up to hide that one little staircase. With hurricane season coming up, there's going to be wind going through there, and it's going to bust it all out. It's going to hit my house, and it's going to hit Tammy's house next door. So I see this as sort of a dangerous thing to do, because where's the air going to go? It's going to knock that wall out. This came to my mind, I'm married to an aerospace engineer. This is sort of how this came, you know, that I thought this might happen. So I think it's going to be a dangerous thing to put up this wall. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Merkley. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for this application? Thank you, Ms. Merkley. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for this application? Sitting and hearing none. We will close the public hearing, and I'll open it up for discussion or a motion.
I, I wanted to disclose first off that I did some exchange with Benny on this issue over the email piece.
As did I.
Any other disclosures? Sorry, forgot about that piece.
I did have a question for staff, because we did get a piece of email that aesthetically made the same kind of a comment about enclosing this thing. Is, is there a way for this to be still approved without that wall?
For it to be considered accessory apartment, the wall has to go up, because it has to appear like a single-family dwelling. If, if the wall is not to go up, then it's considered a duplex or a two-family unit, and therefore it has to get an SGP. So it can't be proved, it can't be approved administratively as is. It has to have an SGP.
That's what our motion will be.
Which is the purpose of this hearing, right?
So our vote will be no wall if we support the SGP.
Correct. It'll, it'll remain as it is now, with the stairs visible.
I went by there. It's, it looks great to me. And she's right. It is pristine. It's a very nice, I haven't done that neighborhood in a long time. I was really surprised. It's a very nice neighborhood. My daughter used to hang around.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of SUP twenty-four dash zero 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 eight, one thirty-five Country Club Drive, two-family unit.
And the waiver?
And the waiver.
We're going to do that as two votes. So the, the first will, will be the SUP. So we have a motion to approve, Ms. Stennis.
Mr. Haldeman.
Yes.
Mr. Polster.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Dr. Allman.
Aye.
Mr. Everson.
Aye.
Mr. May.
No.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then I'll entertain a motion for the waiver.
Waivers for the, take away the wall.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, waive the requirement, so.
Waive the requirement to connect to sewer.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend.
Not the wall.
Correct. Yeah. You just voted on the SUP for the duplex, and that involves the wall. This is a motion to waive the requirement to connect to sewer, and the Board of Supervisors has the ability to approve that. So we will transmit your recommendation to them on that as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend the waiver to connect this to the sewer.
Mr. Holden.
Ms. Stennis. Mr. Haldeman.
Yes.
Mr. Polster.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Dr. Allman.
Aye.
Mr. Everson.
Aye.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Second public hearing this evening, SUP dash twenty-four dash zero zero one one, revocation of special use permit number two dash ninety-two Colonial Golf Design, Inc. Ms. Parish, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. At its meeting on May fourteenth, 2024, the Board of Supervisors initiated revocation of the special use permit two dash ninety-two Colonial Golf Design Incorporated, which allows the use of a golf course on property located at eighty-two eighty-five Dyaskin Road. The property is Zoned A1 General Agricultural and is designated rural lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. The adopted initiating resolution described the following concerns regarding the existing conditions of the property, which prompted the revocation process. The operation of the golf course has ceased more than a decade ago, and number two, due to the disuse of the property, the golf course is not in compliance with one or more conditions of the existing SUP, including one, failure to maintain best management practice, and two, failure to submit annual integrated pest management reports to the county. Section twenty-four dash two, revocation of special use permits of the James City County zoning ordinance, permits the governing body to initiate a revocation of the special use permit, and process shall be the same as a new application for a special use permit. The existing special use permit was approved on April twentieth, nineteen ninety-two, which allows for an eighteen-hole golf course, driving range, clubhouse, three-hole practice course, maintenance building, and turf nursery. The SUP is subject to twelve conditions. Staff reviewed the existing property conditions and found the following. The golf course has been closed for more than a decade. The Virginia Department of Environmental Quality approved a non-point nutrient credit plan for the property, and a declaration of restricted covenants was recorded for approximately twenty-one acres on the property. The eighteen-hole golf course appears to have been maintained based on aerials. The three-hole practice course and driving range has been revegetated based on those aerials. In two thousand and ten, the Storm Water and Resource Protection Division inspection reports found that the vegetative filter strip BMP had excessive erosions, excuse me, excessive erosion, and sinkholes, and that the large pond BMP showed a crack. Additional inspections in May two thousand and thirteen, January of two thousand and seventeen, and February of two thousand and twenty were also conducted, which showed that the large pond BMP was in failure mode. Staff last inspected the area in April of two thousand and twenty-four. This inspection revealed that the embankment, barrel pipe, and emergency spillway all have failed. In accordance with the MAP-T two, future roadway congested levels, which was prepared during the 2045 Comprehensive Plan update, Forge Road and Dyaskin Road are projected to have low levels of congestion through 2045. In accordance with twenty-four dash twelve, revocation of special use permits, staff evaluated the property in accordance with the five criteria listed within that ordinance. Number one, change in conditions affecting public health, safety, welfare since the adoption of the special use permit. Stormwater and Resource Protection reported that repairs are needed on the existing conditions of the property. The police and fire department received seven, seven phone calls since January one of 2019 for the property. The reports cited brush fire, trespassing, suspicious person, and animal control concerns. The Virginia Department of Transportation reported that due to VDOT regulatory changes since nineteen ninety-two, an updated traffic analysis should be performed if the property was to be used again as a golf course. However, an updated traffic analysis would not be triggered under the existing SUP. Approximately three hundred and sixty new homes have been constructed within a two-mile radius of the property, and since in the last ten years, approximately a hundred of those three homes were built. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan has strengthened its emphasis on the protection of Forge Road, which is one of the main two roads traveled to access the property. Number two criteria, repeated violations of this chapter, including any conditions attached to the special use permit by the owner operator of the use. The property is subject again to twelve SUP conditions. Staff has identified two noncompliant conditions. Condition number two, best practice management, best management practices or BMPs shall be provided to control the rate and improve the quality of stormwater runoff. Staff is of the opinion that there had been no substantive efforts to repair the BMP for the past fourteen years or longer. Deteriorating conditions prevent the BMP from effectively controlling and maintaining the rate of quality of stormwater runoff as designed when approved. This situation creates a violation of the special use permit. And condition three, as part of the operation and maintenance plan, copies of the integrated pest management records are to be submitted annually to the county. Staff did not find any annual application records as required by this condition, which also creates a special use permit violation. It is important to note that the zoning administrator has not issued an official notice of violation. Should the golf course reopen, it would be imperative that these violations be resolved. Number three, fraudulent, false, or misleading information supplied by the applicant or his agent for the special use permit. Staff is unaware of any fraudulent, false, or misleading information supplied by the applicant. Number four, improper public notice of the special use permit public hearings when the permit was considered by the planning commission or governing body. Staff is unaware of any proper, improper public notification of the existing SUP. Number five, an error or misfact, excuse me, an error or mistake, in fact, that led to an arbitrary or unreasonable decision made by the governing body when approved, when approving the SUP. Staff is unaware of any error or mistake that would have led to an arbitrary or unreasonable decision made by the governing body. Additionally, staff finds a golf course, the use of the golf course is consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, which lists commercial recreational uses as a recommended use in areas designated rural lands. The adopted commentary further states that retail and other commercial uses serving rural lands are encouraged to be located in a planned commercial location on major thoroughfares, thoroughfares inside the primary service area. The property is located outside the primary service area in an area where there is not a planned commercial location. Therefore, consistency with the Comprehensive Plan may be dependent on the nature and intensity of any accessory retail or other commercial use for the property for the site. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors revoke SUP two dash ninety-two Colonial Golf Design Incorporated in accordance with section twenty-four twelve of the James City County zoning ordinance for the following reasons. One, lengthy closure of the existing golf course use. Number two, deteriorating conditions which prevent the existing BMP from effectively controlling and maintaining the rate and quality of stormwater runoff as designed when approved. Number three, failure to comply with the existing special use permit conditions. Number four, increased number of housing within a two-mile radius. And number five, reopening of the existing golf course after, after a lengthy closure without the benefit of being reevaluated in accordance with twenty-four dash nine. Special use permit of the James City County zoning ordinance could result in a negative impacts to surrounding properties, including, but not limited to, increased traffic along a rural community corridor, and possible incompatibility of the use due to the existing surrounding character of the area and the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Finally, upon speaking with a representative of the owner, the owner of the property does not object to the revocation of the special use permit of the existing golf course as a different use for the property is being planned. This concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Parish. Any questions?
I still can't wrap my arms around this point. What is the practical impact of revoking it?
Practical impact, if, should the Board of Supervisors revoke it, and say a new use or a, a new golf course would come into effect, then that process would come back through the planning commission as if it were new, so it could be reevaluated when reopened to ensure that the appropriate mitigation, mitigations are, are done or approved with the reopening of such a course.
But if a golf course operator was coming there now, wouldn't they have to follow all the conditions that are already listed?
Correct, that were approved in nineteen ninety-two. So what we're saying is that because of the discontinuing of that use for so, for such, such a long period of time, the other surrounding developments that have happened, the Comprehensive Plan updates and so forth, they felt like we would need to reevaluate it based on a new golf course reopening.
At the worst of the time.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Parish. Go ahead and open the public hearing. And the first speaker card I have this evening is John Sharp.
Good evening. My name is John Sharp. My wife and I live on, at thirty-four oh six North Riverside Drive, which is directly across Mill Creek from the golf course. Our backyard abuts the creek, and the golf course is directly across from that. Everything that the staff just went over with you resonates very strongly with many of our neighbors and ourselves, and the idea of, of a serious relook at that golf course, should it be used as a commercial property again, definitely ought to be, the consideration letting somebody use, what is it, thirty-year-old approval requirements seems inappropriate at best. So our recommendation, urging, is that you accept staff's recommendation for the revocation of that special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Second speaker card is Paula Bennett.
My name is Paula Bennett. I reside at thirty-three twenty North Riverside Drive in Lenexa, and I have a home in Eagle Tree Farm facing Dyaskin Creek, which is very close to where Mill Creek and Dyaskin Creek join together. I have been on Dyaskin Creek for over nine years. I am here to say that I am in support of SGP twenty-four zero zero one one, the revocation of SUP two ninety-two. I urge the planning commission to require that the property be returned to base A1 agricultural zoning and remediation before proving any further development. The remediation will not only prevent future damage to the environment, but should continue to enhance fisheries, protect our wildlife, and ensure the protection of human health. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Our next speaker card, Merrill Lessinger Bailey.
I also would like to add my voice to the.
Could you, please state your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Merrill Lessinger Bailey, thirty-three, thirty-three forty North Riverside Drive, also in the Eagle Tree subdivision. My husband and I have been living there for twenty-four years now. I think it's more than a coincidence that the population of ospreys and other wildlife have been on, on the increase in the last few years. They had been almost to the point of nonexistence while the golf course was going. Certainly, I don't have any concrete proof, but it does seem like it's more than just a coincidence. So since it seems to be recovering now, and there seems to be so many violations that have come to pass, and the whole community has really changed, as former speakers have said, I would urge you to say yes to this revocation of the previous SUP, and to be very careful about any further violations that might possibly happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker card is Frank Lobash.
Good evening, thanks. My name is Frank Lobash. My wife and I live at thirty-three fifty-six North Riverside Drive, which is also in Eagle Tree Farms, and our property abuts Mill Creek to the golf course as well. I'm here to speak in support of SUP twenty-four eleven, which is a revocation of SUP two dash ninety-two. I want to thank the current staff and elected officials for their work in taking this first step in rectifying what has been uncovered to be a pretty clear violation of the previous SUP. Mr. Wilson's email to Ms. Parish dated eleven June brings aspects to light that make it clear that the property owners of eighty-two eighty-five Dyaskin Road have apparently never made any effort to meet several requirements set forth for the operation of the golf course. Previous to now, it appears that we as a county have also failed to enforce the SUP, allowing property transfers in nineteen ninety-five, two thousand and nine, and again in twenty twenty-three, with all these stated violations in effect. There are no repairs or remediations that can make up for thirty-two years of disregard in any attempt to maintain the current SUP. Also, county legal should investigate whether the current owners met the standard of innocent purchaser, as described by the EPA and the Virginia, the Virginia Code prior to their most recent transfer of twenty twenty-three. I urge the planning commission to recommend a strong yes to the Board of Supervisors, as recommended by your staff and supported by the current property owners of SUP twenty-four eleven. Furthermore, considering the active sales listing for the property and the multiple conceptual plans and proposals that have been filed with the county over the past twelve weeks for this property, I also request immediate notification of these transgressions and concerns, as stated in Ms. Parish's memorandum to the commission, to be distributed to all concerned departments within the county. This would also alert any would-be buyers of the concerns that exist within the county and the residents at this time. There are several concerning aspects that this information has brought to light over the last several weeks. Like most people, when we moved out to Mill Creek, we did some due diligence, and we were concerned that there was a golf course on Mill Creek that we shared Chesapeake Bay watershed waterway with. I researched it and saw that the SUP was operated under. It was pretty good to see that the county had taken a proactive approach that would mitigate environmental risks of turf maintenance. mitigate environmental risks of turf maintenance as well as storm runoff. At the very least, I felt comfortable that if levels exceeded what was deemed acceptable, safe to humans, or healthy for the environment, the county enforcement would be aware and would address the issue before it got out of hand. Unfortunately, I was wrong. None of this, none of us today can state with fact what level of turf maintenance chemicals, herbicides, or pesticides were used and potentially washed into Mill Creek or entered the local food chain. Here is some anecdotal evidence from my 15 years of observation of living on Mill Creek. My observations began around the time the golf course closed. First, there were no osprey on the creek. Fish and wildlife in general were very limited, especially in comparison to other creeks along the Chickahominy River. The water quality year-round was terrible due to the amount of silt constantly suspended in the water. Several algae blooms in the summer months were common, and there were no visible creek bottom grasses anywhere. Over the years following the end of the golf course operations to present, bottom grasses have started to return in the midsummer months, and water quality has visibly improved. Algae blooms are less common. Different fish species are now present. The osprey have returned to hunt, and there is an active bald eagle nest that sits high in one of the trees on the golf course. Though this is anecdotal evidence, it points potentially to an operation that was ongoing before 2010 at the golf course that possibly caused this wildlife to leave or die off. Because of the clear disregard over the past 32 years and potential negative environmental impact on Mill Creek, the surrounding areas, and the Chesapeake watershed, Chesapeake Bay watershed as a whole, I implore this commission to include three items in their recommendation and forward it to the appropriate James City County agencies immediately. First, as stated, time is of the essence. Forward all information appropriate to county agencies to prevent a property transfer or other proposals from being approved before having all the facts of environmental impact and a decision of liability or remediation requirements of the current property owners. This will help ensure an opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to weigh in at their September meeting. Next, inform the Chesapeake Bay Board and Wetlands Board of the environmental stewardship transgressions that have been uncovered, and recommend the commission an environmental impact study on and around the property to determine what, if any hazardous chemicals, are currently in the creek sediment, Mill Creek water, or wildlife food chain. Furthermore, if deemed appropriate, make the public aware of any potential health issues and hold responsible parties accountable for fixing and mitigating any damage that maybe exists. Finally, ensure the appropriate decision-making and enforcement agencies within the county are notified and aware of the items outlined in Mr. Wilson's letter, and appropriate detail of that information is available to the Board of Supervisors for their September meeting, where they should also consider Mr. Wilson's recommendations on required remediation by the current property owners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lobash. The last speaker card I have this evening is Virginia McLaughlin.
I'm Virginia McLaughlin, residing at 3336 North Riverside Drive. I've been a resident of James City County since 1980, and for the past 25 years, my husband, John, and I have been living on our small farm in Toano on Mill Creek. Along with our neighbors, many of whom have spoken tonight, we've been following with great interest the preliminary proposals for future development on the property formerly operated as colonial golf course situated on Mill Creek off Dyasken Road. We just heard from Frank Lobash, who provided an excellent overview of current issues and concerns related to the failure of prior owners to comply with the original conditions of the SUP issued prior to construction of the golf course in 1992. I strongly concur with Frank's statement, and I'll keep my own remarks very brief to emphasize three points. I too fully support SUP 240011, revocation of special use permit number 292 Colonial Golf Design Incorporated. Secondly, the property at 8285 Dyasken Road should be rezoned A1 once again. And third, before JCC approves any new SUP requests or development plans for the property, owners should be required to remediate all issues previously identified, as well as to comply with all current related regulations. We appreciate your attention to this issue and trust that the county will provide greater oversight of compliance on this property in the future as we move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this application? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Mr. Pollster?
The county did two updates to watershed management plans, both the Armuth and the Powhatan, but for the very first time, we did a watershed master plan for the Dyasken Creek. And so you heard Mr. Haldeman's piece about the amount of impervious service and the damage that it's done over time. And the Dyasken Creek watershed is probably the last remaining pristine watershed we have in the county. As a matter of fact, the area that we're talking about has a 3% to 4% impervious for both currently and in the future. I think the revocation of this gives us an opportunity to make sure that we continue to keep it as pristine as it has been and will be in the future, and that if it does come back for an SUP, we look very, very hard at any residential development in this end of the county for it, so that we don't end up like we do in the Mill Creek and the Powhatan of watersheds that are non-supporting. So it really is an opportunity, and that Mill Creek piece drains all the way from Anderson's Corner all the way into the Lower Chickahominy. And so anything we can do to protect that piece of the environment, I fully support. So I will support the revocation of this SUP.
Any other comments, discussion?
I came here not knowing what the impact was, but I will say that the comments today kind of opened my eyes to, I will also support this SUP revocation.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the board the revocation of SUP 24-001 Colonial Golf Course and the SUP itself, SUP 2-92.
So just for everybody, yes vote is in support of the revocation. So Ms. Istanis, the roll, please.
Mr. Haldeman?
Yes.
Mr. Pollster?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Dr. Allman?
Aye.
Mr. Everson?
Aye.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Our last public hearing this evening is SUP-24-0010. Just before we move on, Mr. Crump, just would just ask everybody's input. Obviously, we'll have to take a roll call after the public hearing, but the applicant has requested a deferral, and is anybody opposed to that? So, okay, so, Mr. Crump?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So as you said, the applicant has requested deferral to the August 7th meeting and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? So at this point, I will open the public hearing, and is there anybody that wishes to speak on the application for the Arlington Island Road tourist home? Oh, there we go, sorry.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Dr. Ken Latimer. I live at 704 Arlington Island Road, which is sort of adjacent to 724. Since I purchased my property in 2010, this area called Arlene's View, mini subdivision, has been a very tight community, small community of single-residence homes. I'm opposed to turning this into a tourist home or an Airbnb where people are constantly in and out of the neighborhood. They're unknown to us, unknown character. I'm just against that. The second problem that I have, or potential problem, is on my private property, I have a boat ramp that fronts Dyasken Creek. And according to the subdivision plat, the owners of record have used that boat ramp to launch and retrieve their personal watercraft. According to my real estate attorney, those owners cannot designate third-party use of that facility or launch or retrieve other people's watercraft for them. And I see a potential problem here if this ends up being a tourist home that I'm going to have to deal with, and that's going to be people unknown to me trespassing on my posted property without my knowledge or permission. And I want to nip that in the bud if we can. So first off, I am against turning this property into a tourist home. Secondly, if it ultimately is approved by the commissioners as a tourist home, I want a restriction on that property, that the only people that can launch or retrieve watercraft are the owners of record on the property deed, not renters. And also, I want it stated that the owners of that property can't leave their boats there for their renters to launch and retrieve, because I see that it puts me at severe legal jeopardy should somebody get injured or killed. You know, they always go after the landowner when something happens. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Latimer. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
So at this point, I am going to go ahead and entertain a motion to, do I have to close it first or continue it, or shall I take a vote first?
Continue this?
Yeah, keep the public hearing open and just continue it.
Okay. So can we just do a voice vote then?
That's fine.
So by voice vote, I'll take a motion to continue this to our August 7th meeting.
Aye.
I was going to make a motion that we defer SUP 24-001 to 7 September.
So.
August 7.
7 August. So, so we have a motion to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
So we will continue the public hearing to August 7, 2024. Dr. Latimer, your comments will become part of the record, so, and this will come up again at the August Planning Commission meeting, so.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
So thank you for coming out this evening. So we have no planning considerations, planning commission considerations this evening, so we are on to the planning director's report. Ms. Istanis?
I don't have anything additional to add. Just as a reminder, FYI, the Board of Supervisors doesn't meet in August, so they'll have their July meeting next week, and then we'll meet again in September. So anything you heard tonight that needs to go to the Board of Supervisors will be considered by them in September.
Any questions for Ms. Istanis?
We don't have a policy committee meeting next week, do we?
I don't believe we do. Did Josh leave?
Yep, he just walked out the door.
I haven't heard that it's been canceled, but I haven't gotten an agenda yet either.
Okay, let me check on that, and we'll get right back to you tomorrow. Okay.
It's Thursday at 3:00?
Yeah, thank you. I'm recalling the agenda item now, so, and because it's Thursday, you probably will be getting your stuff tomorrow, your agenda items.
It'll be Thursday the 11th, right?
But I will definitely confirm, I will definitely confirm via email tomorrow, just...
The 11th, though. I got that right? It's Thursday, the 11th.
Yeah, 3:00 PM, Thursday, the 11th. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Mr. Rogers?
Can we go over, or can you refresh my memory on who it is that's representing us to the Board of Supervisors on the next few?
I'll recirculate that tomorrow, so I don't, I didn't look at it before I came over this evening, so, but we can pull it and I'll resend that.
Just can't, I don't know if I'm on the, someone's on the hook for next week?
Right, so I'll send that back out to everybody tomorrow.
I've got September.
And on to planning commission discussions and requests. Anything for the group? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our August 7, 2024 meeting.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.[1522.83]